We do welcome you to the workshop. And just as a reminder, as always, if you have a following with it, please put that on silent mode. And also, just as a reminder in our workshops, we can just discuss that, there will be nothing that we go on tonight. But that being said, we do have everyone present. And we brought Adam D., which is the viewer that comes in. Basically, our minutes from the workshop in April and the business meeting in April. There's several field trips on there for the dismissals. Any discussions or questions about those? If not, we'll move to the director's report.
Good evening. Couple of things this afternoon. Just a reminder that our employee appreciation receptions tomorrow evening starts at four at Franklin County Hospital Cafeteries. We'll hope that I'll be able to make that in advance for dinner and some live entertainment. For the personnel report, you'll see that there's very few listed there. We're kind of coming down to the end of the school year. There is a transfer, Kim Casey. The principal at Swanee recommended that she transfer to preschool next year. And that will be replacing that Charlton employee to be a part-time pre-K director. Otherwise, pretty much standard moves. And next is the in-house. Oh, sorry, use of stockpile days. We put that in. Just found out this morning at 7:30, I had made the request, April 19th, finally got word back from the State Department, that we are allowed to use two of our stockpile days. We used four of the 10 that we have set aside for snow days. And so they have now granted us the opportunity to use two of those for professional development. So we're exchanging, the 25th and the 26th of May will be professional development days for our teachers. Students will not be attending those days. So it basically shortens the school year by two days and allows the teachers to get together prior to summer and start planning for next school year. So it's very advantageous. I do apologize about the late notice. I wasn't aware that this was an option. And when I requested some information, it's actually in state law, in Tennessee code. And then there is a form at the state that you have to fill out submitting that your professional development plan for those two days and ask for that exchange. So we're going to try to get the word out as quickly as possible through the media and let parents know our ESP programs will be continuing during that time. So there'll be options for parents at those days. But hopefully, we're out far enough that they'll be able to make arrangements for their students.
Is that May 24 days? There'll probably be four days, a half day?
That's the abbreviated day. The abbreviated day moved from the 26th to the 24th. So that's our 8 to 9:30 day.
Didn't you feel good about that, even with Blackberry winter coming up?
I do. I think we're good for this year. Next year, my intent will be to start much earlier, probably around spring break. We'll take a look at where we are with our stockpile days and make a decision earlier in the year. And then we'll have more opportunity to truly plan the professional development days. But we'd have plenty that we can go over with the teachers. And I think it's a great opportunity for them to get together and collaborate based on what happened through the year and then just kind of start thinking about changes that they want to implement for next year. By having grade level meetings and subject area meetings, we're going to do some breakout sessions where they can actually choose different options for professional development. And then we will have the second half of that last, our second day, that'll be happening in their schools for school-specific professional development. So it's a great opportunity for us.
So it's actually given us two extra days for professional development that we didn't realize we had?
It's an exchange.
Yeah.
Exchange of those stockpile days for them, for the students. No other questions? Just a quick, I know it's not on the list, but Ten Ready kind of falls in there as well. As you're aware, we did not end up administering the 3 through 8 Ten Ready test. And it will not be scored, the Part 1, we'll get results from that, but it will not count toward anything. We are continuing with the high school testing, and that is ongoing. We did receive those materials, so we will continue with high school testing. And my understanding is, and there's more to follow, I'm actually waiting on an email now from the commissioner that will give us some additional information about how those scores are going to impact. Our first initial understanding is that that, those high school end-of-course tests will actually count for the entire school system's growth scores this year. So I'm not sure exactly how that's going to play out, but there'll be more to follow. And that's the same look I had when I heard it. It's very frustrating. So we'll see. I'm trying not to jump again and get upset too quickly because I think there's still a lot more that has to be done.
You probably will.
Well, I'm trying to continue. I'm trying to get a thousand skin on this, but it's just been extremely frustrating because we're administering end-of-course tests that are not being held accountable to teachers or to students. So I'm asking what would come into the test? And we haven't really gotten an answer.
Who takes that to the...
The people selling the test.
Well, they're no longer in the program today, so they're not getting the benefit to just either. Evidently, when all of this started falling apart, the State Department went to the federal government, to the Department of Education, and said, "We will go ahead and administer this part of it." And so their kind of, their hopes were tied at this point because they offered that up as a solution to be able to offer the end-of-course test, or actually complete the end-of-course test. And they were relieved from having to administer the 3 through 8 grade tests. So I think it was really a trade-off. So more to follow. But we're expecting more information even this week to be able to share with principals by Thursday, or Monday of our principals' meeting.
Are the end-of-course tests being, are they going to be included in the final grade for students? How can they not?
And they're not part of the teacher gross scoring this year? Yeah, so it's going to be interesting. But I just wanted to make sure everybody had seen that. I assume you've had because we've had lots of discussion on that, but getting the word out. The third is on the agenda there is an in-house budget amendment. This is just simply moving some line items around and work for information. It doesn't require a vote, but Andrew Smith and I have to sign off of that movement. The first there is obviously with transportation line item, we do some money around because we had some cost savings. And we were actually able to purchase an additional special education bus for next year. So that's where the $91,000 is going. And you'll see other line items there. If you have specific questions, Cindy Lay comes here and we can talk about what those are going toward. But it was just basically cleaning up the budget for this year. Next is the budget draft. And I apologize for the late notice on this, but as you, as I mentioned in my email, Ms. Foster and I went to Nashville today, braced the rainy weather going and coming. It was awful when we got there. But I had a discussion with Mary Ann Dersky, and she is the person at the State Department who pretty much manages BEP allocations. And I just wanted to understand what those numbers meant. And I kept comparing last year's numbers with this year's numbers, and I could not make them make sense. And she said, "Because they're not a comparison." So every year has to stand on its own, and it is based on what the state is going to allocate toward education. So this year, obviously, there was an increase with the enhancement numbers. So we did expect an increase. Initially, we thought it was going to be about $373,000. The actual state increase this year is only $281,000. And there's several different pieces that play into that. And I can go through it. It's, I don't want to get too far down in the weeds, but just to kind of make you aware that that was our additional allocation from the state this year was $281,000. Because we are, this is a positive and a negative, but our fiscal capacity has increased, so our ability to pick up our share locally has increased. And we are actually, our percentage of what we're supposed to provide increased this year by 1.5%, which doesn't sound like a whole lot, but when you're talking about $37 million, 1.5% is pretty significant at the local level. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. There's still, this is not set in stone yet, so we can change some. But I feel pretty good about the allocations because the $281,000 does include the offset of what we were getting for stability, which was $900 and something thousand dollars, $926. So when you add those numbers together, technically, we're getting a little over $1 million this year because we're still receiving that $926,000 that's built in. So the only additional revenue that's actually showing is $281,000. So I shared it with you just as an if I, and like I said, we learned a lot today. It's definitely worth the trip going out there. We have another fiscal management workshop next week that Lynn and I are attending in Dixon. It's a two-day, so I feel like we will be very comfortable with these BEP funding. And I'll have a little better idea of that next year.
Do any other systems have the same measurement used against them?
Everybody pretty much has the same measurement. They use that TASSER. If you look at the bottom of the page, that TASSER index and the SEVER box index, those are applied to every school system. So your ability to pay is based on that formula. And she's starting to share the formula, but I don't want the formula. It's more than math than I think I want to handle. But basically, when you look at those two, TASSER and SEVER, and you average those together, we're at .467%. So for the entire state budget, which is $226 million, our portion of that $226 million that we have to be responsible for is .467%. That's our cut of the pie. So it's, you know, when you start talking those new numbers.
You're talking about local?
Yes, ma'am.
Four points.
.467 is that very last number on the first page. That's our, that's our contribution to, that we're required to put into the local education, which basically equates to the $10.9 million that we're having to do for matching funds to the 26th that the state is giving us.
That's a little ways, isn't it?
Now, it's just an increase of 1.5% this year, but nothing too significant. So it was a very good discussion. And the other piece of that, and all of you saw the draft of the budget for this year. I don't know, Mr. Carolyn, how far you want me to go through this? If you want to go round, I'll hit the high spots. If you have questions, I can answer those. And obviously, with Ms. Lay comes here as well, she can answer those.
I will hit the high spots.
Okay.
And if anybody has any questions about a particular line.
In the high spots, let me pass this around as well. And we'll get both of these documents loaded onto your board. I apologize for not getting them on there. It was kind of a last-minute decision. The draft budget that I sent you includes a 2% raise for all of our employees, and it includes a 1.5% increase for our contracted bus routes, as well as all of the advanced degrees and steps for our employees. So what you're getting is an estimate, this is what Ms. Lay put together, if we did a 1%, a 2%, or a 3%, what that would cost the school system, or what the money would actually equate to. That includes benefits. So a 1% raise for the certified and support, those first two lines is in red there. It's $287,000 for a 1%. For a 2%, it's $574,000. And for a 3%, it would be $861,000. So what this budget is built around is that 2% raise figure of $574,000.
Forward including?
Yes, ma'am. That's all employees.
And that's incorporated in this budget?
Correct. It is. It's already in there. So I make that as my recommendation for next year. And I'll just walk through, the first four pages are the revenues. And on that first page, you'll notice the line item 40210, local option sales tax. Generally, what we've been seeing is that 3.93 number. This year, there was an excess when we were supposed to get the true 50%, as you all are aware, what the discussion happened in August, September timeframe. As a result of that, there actually was a projection that for April, May, and June, and Cindy, if I may speak, you correct me, okay? There was a projection that for April, May, and June, we would be in excess of our 50% of the 3.9 by $370,000. So we were given $370,000 into this current year's budget. When that goes into that local option sales tax line item, it then becomes a maintenance of effort. So next year, that $370,000 would mean that we would be starting with local option sales tax at 4.3 next year, not the 3.9 figure. Does that make sense?
So when do we actually review and make that final adjustment? When does the last one, are we, do we run a month behind in our numbers?
Yeah, it stays at least a month, two months behind. But we'll say that as they're out, we're saying the G P target projected to be that all time.
Right. But I mean, when the actual comes in, we'll change that to the actual, won't we?
It could be fifty-three or thirty-five.
When our local sales tax comes in, will we take that actual number and roll it into that budget?
Yes.
This was what was projected, so that will be adjusted. And you'll notice that in the column to the far right, the explanation, most of these are based on a three-year average. And so that's how we generate the revenue numbers. And I've talked about BEP funding, which is on page two, line item 46511. Again, there is a slight increase there of $281,000, but that does include this year that 12-month of insurance, so that was helpful. And then there are some grants that are listed on page three that are worked out there down at the bottom, through the federal and through the state, different. And those really didn't change significantly at this point. We had a couple of grants that weren't renewed.
Yeah, I was gonna say, too, though, we didn't put expenditures in if we were waiting on a grant, so it'll all balance out.
Right. You're going revenue and expenditure, it gets a grant.
So the total revenue, which is on page four, is $43,378,600. That's an increase this year of $23,373, is what our estimated revenues are.
I have a question back to the last page.
Sure.
There's two different restricted accounts on the last page. One, the fourth from the bottom.
You talked about how it says?
The last page, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It says restricted for education. Am I hearing that off?
We're on page four.
I'll wait.
Okay. I'm getting ahead of it. She wanted to get to the last page, you showed me.
Well, you don't.
Okay. So that's all of the-
I saw that bottom line.
That's all of the revenue information. If you have any questions, I'll go on into the expenditures. Okay. On page one of the expenditures, obviously, that first line item, 116, which is our teacher salary line item, you'll see that there is an increase there of about $821,000. As I've explained, you know, some of that is realignment as we went through this reorganization. We're trying to get our positions aligned correctly. There's also the 2% raises in there, which a large, or a large portion of that 2% raise is captured there because of the number of teachers that will get that raise. And then we're also putting in place a differentiated pay plan, so there's an additional $135,000 for that program. Our intent next year is to set up curriculum coaches at the school level. So there would be a stipend for those teachers that were selected to be what we call kind of lead teachers. And they would be doing the instructional coaching at the school level versus us sending someone from central office to do that. So it's an advantage from the standpoint, it gives our really strong teachers an opportunity to be compensated for all of that additional work, but a lot of times, they do without compensation. So we would like to set that up this coming year, and that money is allocated for that.
What are you thinking about for staff, how much money?
Right now, we're ballparking it. I think this number is based off of a $3,000 stipend. And we also talked about giving release time to those teachers, possibly a substitute or two substitute days a month, that they could then go out of the classroom and work with other teachers. That's a little bit, we're not real sure about that one yet because a lot of your lead teachers are not going to be out of their classroom. So we've got to work through that process, and we're going to work with the principals this fall to set that program up. And my intent is to have those curriculum coaches selected and onboard, working that position by January.
And they're in-house already?
Yes, they'll be current teachers.
Strong teachers, yeah.
And there'll be an application process that they'll go through if they're interested in doing that.
But they will be full, kind of, will have full load as far as teachers.
Correct. This will be an additional, like I said, the stipend will pay for that extra time that they're going to spend on this. So that's why there's a significant amount increased there. You'll see some offset to that as we go through this first 71100, or 7,000 series numbers. Down at the bottom of that, the section 399, other contracted services, you'll notice that there's a decrease there of $187,000. We are going to change our internet provider. We're going from AT&amp;T to EMA. We used EMA previously, and when the bids came back, theirs was significantly lower this time, so we're going to switch to EMA. And we also have some additional technology contracts there that were, that came in lower when we started bidding those this year as well. Let me just keep going until you have a question?
We'll agree to those contracts. How long does that lock this in? Is that just a year?
It's a year, two years, removal every year. The, on page two at the top, 429, the instructional supplies, there was some increase there of $157,000. And again, I'm just kind of picking out the bigger numbers here. There's some that are much less, but that had minor changes. The difference there, you'll notice about midway in that current explanation, technology software, we set aside $389,000 for that. The reason that jumped this year, a lot of our schools were individually buying site license for software, and it was killing their local school budgets. They were having to spend all their money on that technology software. So what I've asked the directors to do is get together and consolidate a plan, and we're going to start doing district licenses versus school licenses. If we do that with the software, there's a big cost savings by doing a county-wide. So we had the principals identify those technology programs that they are utilizing in their schools. And then those that were consistently being used across all of the schools, we're going to take that, that cost up at the district level versus at the school level. And that will free up some of their money then to put on the school needs.
That should offer, would it not provide additional for RTI?
Yes, it's the screener and those sorts of things that we're going to be using. Easy CDM is the program that we're looking at for our screener for RTI, yes. So it impacts some of those programs.
Is that going to give us the opportunity also to consolidate? What I mean by that is, are we looking at all schools, looking at some of the same?
Yes, for consistency.
For consistency.
Universal screeners and those sorts of things that we're using currently will ensure that those are being used across the board. So that's why there's a jump in that line item. The next line item for textbooks, there's a decrease there, pretty significant, but we will be purchasing all of our math textbooks, which is this year's adoption, and it lasts for five years. Next year is a very light year with textbooks, so that's why we're not putting as much money in that line item. All we'll have next year is CTE purchases. 722, the regular instructional equipment, you'll see there that there's a drop, a significant one there of $235,000. But if you remember, earlier this year, I asked for approval to move money out of the teacher line item to about the total of $170,000. So that's why that has increased so much this year, but we're dropping that back down to where it actually was previous year. Do you want me to keep going? If you have questions, just down the road, please, because I don't want to, I'll keep rolling, but because we've got quite a bit to go.
And that $170,000, that was, was that for, if I remember correctly, was that Chromebooks?
It was Chromebooks, and we also did some additional wiring at North Middle and at Hotlum.
Okay.
So that money was moved around for that reason, and that's why there was a difference. Okay.
And that gets us, excuse me, but that gets us to, that next year will be purchases, right?
Correct, yes. We're going to add, we're actually in the process of doing the purchase order for the additional Chromebooks for the upcoming month, right?
That's both continental, frankly.
Correct, yes. But that's still in the works. The alternative school, you'll notice a jump there in the first line item. We did add a teacher this year, and that's why that is being captured there. And then further down that list, you'll see, 189, other salaries and wages, that was a secretary that we have moved out of the Special Education Department, and she will be staying at the annex and serve as a secretary, also an instructional assistant with the alternative school. And that was a $20,000 change. So it's still coming out of GP, it's just coming from one line item to another. So really not a drastic difference there.
Should we stay with alternative?
Yes, ma'am. To do administrative and some instructional assistance.
And so that individual salary, is that split between 163 and?
No, the 189 is the one individual's salary.
Okay. And then, I was looking at the aid in 163.
That, we do have one full-time aide.
One full-time aide, okay. All right.
All right, in the next, the special ed program, 71200 series, you'll see a cost savings there with the teacher line item. That's a reduction in the number of employees in special education, as well as if you go along, you'll see some reduction in the eighth line, 163. And then the rest of that's primarily through the decrease in those individuals, then we reduce insurance costs and all the others as a result. Contracts with private agencies, 312, there was a reduction there. And total over, all over, savings in special ed, the total there was $179,872, or less, I guess, budget this year than last year. The next is the CTE program. There was a decrease there of $18,000 in that first line item, 116, and I think that's because we budgeted it for a teacher position that we did not fill. Am I correct? Is that right?
We had one teacher that Elias issued in 713 that we will not have there this year.
Okay, that's what it is. I mean, there was, that was the reason for the decrease.
Now, you said we had a teacher there we will not have. Did we lose a program?
We lost a teacher.
Teacher in.
Excuse me.
We lost a teacher. We could not lose a program.
I just had a hard time wrapping my mind around.
I'd rather not talk about it today.
I hope we're not doubling it up like you said.
I think we'll be fine.
Ms. Spalding's shaking her head no, so I think we're ready.
You saved my word, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's a little bit different than what it sounds. All right, on page four, you'll notice about midway down, for the total instruction line, which is all of the 7,000, or 7100, I guess, series, we're at an increase of $738,948. That will, again, is going to balance out. I kind of panicked when I first saw that number, but as we go through other cost savings that are brought later on in the budget, I think the final number were much better than I expected, so I think we're okay there. The next line item, 72110 is attendance. And again, that was simply just primarily the 2% raise and the impact of the insurance changes on that line item. 72120 is health services. Really no change there as well. Primarily just the 2% raise impacted that final number. 72130, again, pretty much the 2%. There is on the page six, the other salaries, line item 189. That is where Stanley Bean's position, again, with the realignment or reorganization, it includes a full-time student support and facility supervisor, so that's the reason for the increase there. And that's just, again, making the budget reflect the reorganization. Line item 309, contracts with government agencies. We are increasing the SRO budget by 7,000. SROs do not at this time have cell phones, and we want to provide those because it's important for them, especially with the new programs like Stopit and Raptor, to be able to contact those SROs so they can be responders at the front office. And we can't really ask them to do that if we're not providing that phone. So we're working through that process to give all of our SROs a cell phone.
Which line item, is that 309?
That is 309, contract with government agencies, yes. The next is 72210, regular instruction. There's a little bit, again, we're trying to clean up line items with personnel, but those didn't change significantly. Supervisor director, that is Diana Spalding and half of Jenny Crabtree's in that first line item. And with the reduction of a position, there was actually a cost savings in those, in that line. On page seven, line item 189, you'll see other salaries there. There's a little bit of an increase. We are actually including Lori Baggett in that line item because she is now the technology instructional specialist. So we had to realign her position, but it obviously came out of another line item that's not a new position. One item of interest, line item 432 in that section, is the library books and media. We are including a supplement for the, all the schools for the librarians to use in the media centers. The elementary, the total cost for the elementary is $2,390. For the high school, it's $3,020. And that was based on, we tried to come up with a fair way to calculate that. So that is based on every student receives a dollar. So basically, I think the least was $2,000. So basically, I think the least was two hundred and five dollars was twenty, and the largest, obviously, was Franklin County High School with fifteen hundred because that's their student population. So we based it on that for this year, and we'll look and address that with the librarians to see if we need to look at that again next year. And the next part, seven two 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 zero, is the special education program support. Not any significant changes there. An overall decrease in that budget to twenty-three thousand, six seventy-seven on the top of page eight. The CTE support program, again, pretty consistent. And the seven two three one zero, which is the Board of Education budget, starts at the bottom of page eight, fairly consistent.
Will we go back, please?
Okay.
Seven, page seven, one eighty-nine.
Sorry, I've got to get up. Other salaries and wages? Is that what you're looking at? Under special ed?
Right.
Okay.
What's the increase there? We went from sixty-seven hundred to thirty thousand?
It's special ed, summer school. We moved it out of seven one two, although the teachers, so much we didn't have a teacher and partner, I didn't.
So did we move that from another location or?
Right, it's not new, it's just.
Okay, sorry.
It's just moved around. That's okay, I'm sorry, I kind of got it on the world. Go ahead, I'm trying to get to Mr. Gess's. All right, page nine. There is a little bit of an increase under the Board of Education, do some memberships, three twenty. One of the things that we have been involved in this year, TOS, the Tennessee Organization for School Superintendents, has stood up some training opportunities for district-level supervisors, as well as even school-level principals and assistant principals. Very good quality training that they're offering. So we're giving them the opportunity to be members of that organization, and that is the ALI, which is twenty-eight hundred dollars. So it's basically a hundred dollars per principal or administrator that we sign up for that program. And right now, the response that we're getting from the principals has been very positive. So we plan to continue that next year.
So, the conference in fifty-four, the SRO attendants, did they get TOS credit or some kind of credit from administrators?
The administrators, the TASSL is the administrator, and I'm not sure that they get TASSL credit for that or not. Anybody? Okay. Yeah, that's probably in tossing the principals to attend, but we have several that are going this year.
Well, I think that was one of the things that Nazro and Tinsrow came up with to make it more attractive to school.
Right.
Before we leave CTE internally.
Okay.
Are we staying on top of the equipment? Modern, up-to-date technology equipment in our CTE programs? Are they pretty well, are they, no?
Well, actually, no. As far as the money we get allocated from Perkins, and when I say that, in our advanced manufacturing classes, they're not up to date. They were probably purchased in nineteen seventy-seven. Gary Edwards is working with us to give us guidance on updating that, but the cost is phenomenal. Now, we have received a grant, a hundred thousand dollars, as y'all know, last year, and we are in the, I think, very close to receiving the phase two of the LEAP grant because we have been deemed as a model district. So we're hoping we'll get another hundred thousand. But one machine is about seventy-seven thousand.
Is that what we bought the structural welder with last year?
Yes, we have. Yeah, the welding, we've asked for another welding simulator. We have also asked for another Megatronics. We've asked for a lot of things, but I'm not sure that we get it. And at Hotlawn, we're also trying to come up with money for a greenhouse because of their agriculture. They don't have anything compared to Franklin County High School.
I just know it's critical, it's not just important, it's critical just to stay on top of the industries out there, of what their needs are in training our students, but as an example. I mean, and there are monies out there, even Tennessee Valley Authority, they give money out for, you know, equipment updates. We might even get money from ECD, the Economic Community Development, gives extra dollars out there, so. Look, I mean, that was, yeah, really important, isn't it, your thinking?
I've got a question right there, and I'm probably jumping the gun off of, it's probably related to Mr. Gess's question, but that item to fifteen, that ARC, that two hundred and ten thousand.
I don't agree with that much. I think you're, yeah, you're on page nine, under Director's Schools, seven two three twenty.
That ARC payment of two ten?
That's the cost of time up there.
Right, we keep, right, but we keep doing that, the clip of two hundred and ten thousand. What is that based upon?
It's based on actuary, we had done it several years ago, and I'm actually in the beginning stages of getting a new actuary done. Of course, it takes almost a year, we're trying to gather all the information of things that they need to.
Right, but between that fund and the other restricted fund, that's almost five percent of our budget are in those restricted funds. That took, that went one point six million this year. But it's got to be based on either their projection.
It's on the projection of payouts of all their cost of time insurance.
Right.
And in fact, I looked at the analysis that they had, and I think at that point, it went through twenty-four, fifty-four.
Right, my question is this, and I don't know what, I don't know what the true numbers are, but let's say we spent four thousand dollars an employee on that benefit. Even if we've got fifty employees that suddenly retire, we're willing to cover that in that fund.
I'm not sure how, what the expectation is for our employees.
It keeps getting dubbed into an account that we can't touch, but it comes out of our GP budget. And if that's a benefit, I guess we need to look at one of two things. One, reclassifying it, as it needs to be a debt fund and not coming out of our GP budget. But also, at some point, we've got to quit tucking that money if we see that we're okay with it.
I know, at one time, that customer would have put it into a trust, but the county, it's been on both sides of life, we get that time just to keep it in as a reserve rather than put it into a trust, because at least we had that cash, well, for loans and stuff, if we had to take out.
Right, was it, do we draw interest on it?
The county draws interest on it.
On that one?
Uh-huh.
Does, is our fund drawing that interest?
No, I see we don't receive any interest anymore.
That doesn't make sense.
Do you have, do you have any idea how much annually we are paying for these public transportation benefits right now?
Yeah, it's like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty-something thousand. If you look under seven two three two oh two nine nine. Seven two three, I'm sorry. Two nine nine, this year, projected payout, a hundred and forty thousand, seven fifty-two.
What's the number, sorry?
Seven two three one oh, two ninety-nine. It's on page one, the eight of seven. Under other fringe benefit?
Uh-huh. So we're paying a hundred and forty-two a year, but we're citing two hundred and ten.
That's what I'm saying, plus we've already got this other.
If it's even drawing a half a percent interest, we'd be making eighty thousand dollars, and we're not making anything. So something's bad.
And that only, that benefit is only good until you reach the age of sixty-five. So when new people are coming on, you've got older people that are rolling off. So I don't see it being really inflated.
That's not a benefit for you guys anyway, so.
And that's where we're supposed to have a new actuary done, to try to maybe get the number more. You know, maybe get the numbers more where they should be now, since then I said more realistic.
We wouldn't put anything in there until we get enough.
Well, it takes a year to get the actuary back.
We haven't screened anything out of there, and we're not getting any interest. That would be moderate for the nation.
But we're not going to report, put it in there. I think we're required, how long?
Okay.
I think we are, yeah. I don't think we have. It's just.
What, what value, yeah, what value we're going to require to put in?
From what I understand, the actuary, we're required to give the two hundred and ten thousand average year.
So we would have to have it.
And it was higher, and it did drop from two thousand eight to two thousand ten.
But let me understand again, whose decision is it that that fund is restricted and none of the interest goes back into that fund?
Well, the Board of Education itself doesn't receive any interest income since.
But it could go to education as service.
But the way that the, it's written now, you know, that the solid waste gets the first so many dollars, and they don't even need that.
Yeah, I understand, but I guess my concern is this. We're having to take this money out of our GP budget, put it into a drug account that we can't touch, and all the interest goes somewhere else other than education. And that fund doesn't need to come out of education's money.
Well, it's still sitting there, we just can't use it. I mean, we're not actually putting it somewhere else.
But the interest, we don't need any benefit of the interest.
Right now, we're at one point six four for the district.
Like I say, if it's drawing a half percent interest, it's making eighty thousand a year. And we're paying two ten.
So where do you go?
Well, that's what she's saying, it's going into county interest. It'll get, I mean, the counties get the interest off of it, it's just not.
All right, I'm going to back up just a little bit. In the seven two three two zero, Director of Schools, line item one oh three, you'll see that that, that's actually Ms. Foster's salary. We're moving that to another line item to reflect the actual human resource department that we're putting together. So that's why there's such a significant degree decrease in this Director of Schools budget portion. Page ten. Our school messenger contract is due this year, it's twenty-one thousand, nine sixty-five. That's line three nine nine, under Director of Schools. The next is seven two four one zero, Office of the Principal. There's some minor changes there, but nothing significant. And then seven two five two zero is the Human Resource Department that I just mentioned, and that's where you'll see Ms. Foster's salary has been moved to that line item. So we're just trying to reflect the reorganization. And the rest of that is just the two percent raise primarily changes through that. The next section is seven two six one zero, the operation of the plant. And again, this is, there are some, the changes here. Line item one eight nine, other salaries and wages. We moved Brian Norwood's salary out of that because he's coming out from under that section. He'll be in half-time transportation, half-time technology as far as his salary goes. So that's where line item one eighty-nine, what there's a difference there. And then you'll notice down at line item three nine nine, at a contracted services, we paid off the energy education there, which is the last payment this year of ninety-nine thousand. So there's a reduction there in that line item.
Do we have any way of knowing bottom line at the end of that, what we say?
Brian, you pay with.
The interest is another.
Yes, it's like Brian's.
We had two energy savings going on at the same time.
We had lights and then the.
Do what's in the.
We had two energy savings going on at the same time. We had the lighting and the.
And the energy, or the, is this the last year of the Excel grant? Is that right, or do we have another year?
No, we've got several more.
Several more years, okay, all right.
On electricity here on the four fifteen, are we getting any kind of indication on? I know we're basically off of last year's.
Three-year average, yeah.
But are they projecting any increase TVA or?
They projected that part of it could go up two percent, they said. On the TVA part, they reminded us that we had a very mild winter this year to take that consideration. So that's, I just re-budgeted what we started the year with, one point four one five. Because the menu budget, we've taken some out to put into the front.
We're still seeing savings in the energy area period, seeing.
Well, it's all up, unless you look at the kilowatts.
I think it's hard to.
It's hard to look at the dollars.
We've had increases over that period of time.
All right, I'll go on page twelve, yeah. Maintenance of plant, seven two six two zero, there's minor changes there. And that, that line item total, overall increased seventeen thousand, so I think it's probably just a two percent in that section. Seven two one zero, seven two seven one zero, excuse me, transportation. You'll notice in line item one oh five, that is the point five of Brian Norwood's salary. So there was a cost savings there of twenty-six thousand. Line item one forty-six is the addition, it's increased because there is a possibility we'll need to add a route next year for special ed. So that's why the additional drop are there. Page thirteen.
When we say that, does that mean for one person?
No, not necessarily. We're at pretty much. Right, we're pretty much at capacity right now with some of our special ed classes. So, and I know Mr. Norwood plans to spend the summer re-looking at those routes that we're running and trying to be as efficient as possible with what we currently have. So we may not have to add a route, but that's in anticipation that there's a good possibility we may need to. And we'll have a better idea probably next year, once he has a chance to sort of go through the process this year. And again, very few changes on the transportation at this point. We have seen some cost savings, doing some of our own bus maintenance and just inspections, that sort of thing, rather than contracting that out. That's okay.
We bought some software about two, three years ago to help in rerouting or routing our buses.
I'll have to ask Mr. Norwood.
It was never useful. But we made a real effort, when the first year we bought that, it could not help us, or it did not help us.
Do we know why, was it the?
It just wasn't feasible for rural planning.
That sounds like a GPS problem or satellite problem.
Well, it just, their recommendations didn't work for rural working.
I know Mr. Norwood's looking at that for this, and working with the bus drivers to try to be more efficient, so we're not crossing paths with our bus routes. You'll notice in that same section at line item three fifteen, contracts with vehicle owners, there's the one point five percent raise that's been calculated by contract drivers.
When is their contract period up?
We are actually in the process of renewal now. Mr. Kegel has reviewed the contract and redone a good portion of the language that was in the contract, so we thought we have a good document now to go to them with. So we're in that process. And down in line item seven two nine, transportation equipment, that's the movement that you saw earlier in the document, just moving revenues around to be able to purchase an additional bus there.
Let me ask a question there. We've bought a lot of buses over the last few years. Are we about to the point where we're in good shape now and we?
We are, yes, we are. We are, yes, we are. And they extended the life on, and I don't know the size, is it two, two of them? So we've got some additional years of use now, so we should be okay. And again, I think that's something Mr. Norwood's looking at, as to how many buses do we have in reserve and how many do we actually need? I anticipate there will be more cost savings in those line items as we move forward. She, seven two eight one zero, the central and other, that is that first line item one oh five supervisor, that's the other half of Brian's salary, two point five there, at a cost savings of sixty three thousand. The clerical personnel, that is JJ, that will be working with him full time for the IT support, rather than splitting her time between IT and alternative school. The next, on page fourteen, at the top, line item one eight nine, there are two positions there, it's a TSW grant, and Mr. Trill's here if you have any questions about it. But it is a grant that we received, that the state is giving up seventy percent and we're paying thirty percent of that grant for two positions. One is a kind of.
Transition case manager.
Okay, I'll let you speak to it.
I was gonna get in a little while, you want me to get in?
Okay, we'll do it when he does his, that's okay. But just to know, that's where those are, how's that, so we're not repetitive. The next section, Community Services, seven three three zero zero, ESP is adding a position that's in one oh five. What we're going to do is look at a hundred day contract for someone to oversee that program. We need to get a little better handle on the personnel that's in that program as well as the cost and ensure that it's meeting its requirements.
Is that the one that you'd get in the roundups?
That's why I did this. That was our audit. That was our audit funding, and there's just, it needs some more oversight to those directors.
Who is responsible for getting those funds, like is one person, even though they're in separate like areas?
There is a director at each site, ESP site, and we need to make it very clear that it is their responsibility to get those funds to the bank within the three day limit. And like I said, I don't want to place all the blame on them, I want to make sure that we are setting those expectations and they understand those expectations and then holding them accountable.
We get that on audit every year.
This was the fourth year, yeah, this was the fourth year and we need to, we need to correct that.
Collecting that money, is that one of those separation of DBs?
Well, they have options, they can collect it, but if they want to receive it or have a deposit with the bookkeeper at the school, that's gonna be my recommendation. And Ms. Foster's gonna work with those directors as well as this person that's hired to do the part time position to make sure that we're meeting those.
You need it for many people.
So that's why there is an increase there, but that increase is covered by the ESP money itself, so the program itself will pay for that position, but it is a new position, I want you to be aware of that. Rest of that is pre-stander.
Quick question, maybe it's, I missed it, but one eighty nine, the other salaries and wages, why is that going down by ninety eight thousand?
Is that from?
Well, actually, the grant coming into this come October, but it doesn't start till October.
Oh, okay, so it'll come up closer to the three thirty six?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next section is our early childhood or pre-K program, that's seven three four hundred, on page fifteen. We are switching over to a hundred twenty day contract for supervision of that, that's Beth Charlton that I mentioned earlier. She'll be taking over the responsibility for that program. So overall, this section, the cost difference was a hundred thirty four dollars, so we're pretty much about where we were last year with this program. And all of that comes out of the pre-K grants money or statement. So page sixteen, we're almost to seventeen, yeah. This is kind of the summary sheet, you'll notice that the capital outlay section there of the twenty nine thousand is for the OLG contract that we're currently in. You'll see the outlays for the Huntland property, for soccer, as well as the purchase of the property in Huntland. And then we had moved some money into other capital outlay, that's where we actually put the three hundred and seventy thousand that was just given to us from the fifty percent. So we've put that in there as of now, but we are going to use that for a couple of different things, but that's where we placed it for now. So that's why there's a significant increase in that line item for the regular outlay. We are looking at replacing the roof at North Lake, we're waiting on bids, hope to have those early this week. And that is a possibility to use that funding, that three hundred and seventy thousand to do that, as well as the rock work that needs to be done on the drainage ditches at the high school. So both of those are projects, major projects that we're looking at that we need to get accomplished.
Is that, are we looking metal, are we?
Are we looking, I'm sorry.
Metal?
Metal?
No, I don't think. Trying to get somebody to kind of look.
Is it tough finding a reading speaker?
Now, there's a.
We haven't even got a rough estimate yet, but we're getting there, we're getting there.
I think someone's supposed to come today.
Yeah, I think we're.
Someone that's actually got it.
Use, so we wouldn't have to do the bid process, because they're already under contract. All right, the next is debt services, you'll see there that's part of the Excel lighting. And then you'll see eight two three three zero, six two zero, the contribution primarily is about a hundred and ten thousand dollars, that was the education debt payment. I have not included that in this budget, I will ask the Finance Committee and the County Commission to waive that issue due to the increase in our two percent raise. So the bottom line, down there at the bottom, I guess, total expenditures and other uses, we went from forty four million four hundred and sixty two thousand to forty four million six hundred and ten thousand. So it's an overall increase of a hundred and forty seven thousand this year in our budgets. Am I saying that correctly Cindy?
Yes.
Okay. And now page seventeen. This is the fund balance, basically what the projections are at this time. Last year, we projected that we would dip into fund balance one point one seven nine million. We are actually going to dip in about two hundred and ninety thousand at this point, these are estimates, and could change slightly. But we are going to dip in rather than putting money back into fund balance, which we did the previous year at a four hundred and twenty one thousand dollars. This coming budget, the one that you just reviewed, the estimate for that is that we would dip into budget, or into fund balance, one point three zero three million. So it's a minor increase there as well. And what we would project that we would have to take from fund balance to cover this budget. And you'll see that at the very bottom in yellow, our undesignated fund balance is projected to be, with that decrease, am I correct, with the decrease, we would be at three point one six two million. If we actually dipped in a full one point three, which is still seven point four percent of our overall budget. And we're required to have three percent.
Three point is.
Three is down.
Fund balance.
Correct, well, we have to have at least three percent. And the three percent would be one point two seven one.
No, but it's per million.
Correct, excuse me, if we actually spent all the one point three, we would still have a fund balance of three point one six two. Mr. Gaster, question?
There at the bottom, that bottom section, there are two restricted accounts, one's restricted for education, three, four, five, five fives.
That is our ESPs and grants, all of those that have money that we receive that are designated for a particular program.
One is committed for education, I assume that's the insurance, post-recovery.
Yes, it is, that's where we accumulated the two hundred and ten thousand each year, and the six thousand eight hundred and eighty is part of the current ladder, so that's restricted.
What was the other restricted, the four hundred and sixty?
That's our ESP and any grants that we receive, they would roll into that. Because those grants are designated for a particular program, we can't use them for anything but that program.
I can see them reserved, it can be rescheduled again.
But we don't, we spend that money out every year through the program.
Correct, they're self-supported, we supplement a little bit here and there with salaries, but for the most part.
The Department of Transportation will usually grant that.
Right, correct. And for those sorts of purposes, yes. And that is the stipulation of the draft budget.
Doctor Lawrence, I have a quick question. It goes all the way back to the teacher raises and personnel raises. We know that the media, the business office, the State Department has pledged pretty loudly that teachers could get a four percent raise this year. I think we all understand how the BEP works and that would not be possible without a huge local increase. But do our teachers understand that? Are they, are they being informed by principals and so forth, how the budget works, so that they understand why the four percent is not there? Because they've sort of been promised that by some organizations.
I understand what you're saying, in fact, that was a conversation we had with Mary Ann Dersky today. The issue with, when they come across with the four percent, there's never an intent from the state to identify a set of percentage, because BEP doesn't reflect a percentage. Our BEP numbers are based on our allocations of units, and every unit is basically an approved teacher position. Right now, what we get from the state for our BEP, it covers three hundred and fifty positions. Well, obviously, we have a lot more teaching positions than that three hundred and fifty. So even if they sent us four percent to cover for that three hundred and fifty one, there would not be enough to cover for all of our teachers.
And of course, this figures include our support staff.
Correct, it's all employees.
And they're vital to the operation of the schools on a day-to-day basis, but they're not included in a BEP.
Correct. The aides, some of the aides are, there is some stipulation as to who and what is included. But I think we can do a better job of communicating exactly the funding that's happening and why we're kind of restricted to a two percent. We also want to be sure that the teachers understand and all employees understand that, you know, there was a six percent, projected six percent raise in insurance this year. You as a board, and in my recommendation to you as well, are deciding that you're not going to pass that cost on to the teachers and the employees, you're willing to pick that up through this budget. And six percent of an insurance cost is pretty significant. So for every first individual, there's an out-of-pocket cost that they could have received for their insurance, but that's another benefit of that additional BEP funds that we're receiving. We're not changing those allocations for the insurance, so their costs remain the same, but what the school board is paying is greater. So we want to make sure that we communicate all of that to our teachers and employees.
I just don't want them to be.
I understand, and I was the same way, I was concerned.
So we actually, it's more than four percent with the insurance.
I don't know if I can say it would be more than four percent. No, it's, no, the insurance cost would not equal.
Well, that's cheaper to store than anybody, because a four percent increase would be over a million dollars. We can do that, but we can pay to cover the increase of the insurance.
And my recommendation would be the two percent raise, which is what this budget is going to.
I thought I was the correct one, teachers, I could see it making a major difference in schools. Especially for students who utilize that.
Any, is there any? Questions, you were saying that Dr. Lawrence reported, I'm happy to take a look at it. I'm assuming we will.
It depends on how you feel, if you, as a board, want to discuss it further or take a further look. If you have questions after this meeting that you would like for me to answer this week, I'll be happy to do that, if you feel like you're going to be ready next week, but I'll read that to you.
Any values, any questions? Okay, we'll move to. Adam O'Neal, Federal Special Education Program, sixteen seventeen, budgets.
First, I want to do the federal budget, and I want to tell you that I wanted to thank Cindy for working with us this week. She said, don't shoot the messenger, huh? She thought I was going to shoot her, but we understand, we had Dr. Lawrence try to help us get a budget, I appreciate the fact that she did help us figure out a way to get the employees a two percent raise. That was a biggie, and I understand that. Saying that, you know, sometimes it hurts to look at what you need to do, but it was a good reflection back to really see where we might be wasting some money, where we might be able to tweak it up a little bit, see how we can do better. So that's what I did, and as Dr. Lawrence told you in the GP, what we were able to do with our RTI, I have to say, it's really working, it excites me, that we're seeing our numbers and our elementary grades of referrals are dropping. Therefore, when I went back and I started looking at what are the numbers of students we're serving, who are identified as students with disabilities, the numbers were drastically dropping. So what we realized in many of our schools, we can actually consolidate and go to one resource teacher and save a position. So doing that with what Dr. Lawrence instructed, we were able to save some of that money that Dr. Lawrence was talking about, that hundred and seventy nine thousand, without in any way hurting the service that we're providing for our students. So I want to make sure that that doesn't get, oh my gosh, they cut all that out especially. And that's the reason why, that was the intent of the RTI, was to do a better job of looking to see how we're serving our children, are we truly serving the children that we need to serve. The second thing on the table, when we got our federal budget, was a little exciting to know that we got forty three thousand more dollars in our IDA, not even we have before. But forty three thousand dollars, when you're talking about a million dollar budget, doesn't go far, particularly when you start looking at cost of insurance increase, six percent, you look at the two percent raise, you look at step increases, it gets eaten up very quickly. But the good news is that we didn't have to shuffle anybody over into the general purpose budget to cover all of that. We were able to stay within our federal budget and we were able to stay within one dollar of the GP budget. So I'm proud of us, I hope Dr. Lawrence is proud of us as well. It was a learning experience, I've learned a lot this year, but you really do need to take a look at yourself each year and see where, you know, sometimes things are hard to do. But in this case, I think all my teachers are fairly well pleased to see that we've done a great job and that the budget is not going to hurt us this year. Saying that, as I told you, in our federal budget, forty three thousand eight hundred and five dollars was the increase, and then in my special preschool monies, those, they gave us two thousand four hundred and seventy nine dollars more. And that wound up paying for one, excuse me, for two educational positions in preschool, so it pretty much wasn't even harsh there. But it was a good, in that we were able to slide around some things and get everything covered again with increases without any additional money. So we're on the go for that. I didn't know if you wanted me to spend all the time, you've got to think of every single line item, but I can tell you that the majority of the federal budget, as we know, is salaries. We employ lots of employees, we have twenty two educational assistants, we have nurses, we have LP, we have CODIS, PTA, school psychologists, licensed psychologists, all of those things that cost a lot of money. But saying all of that, there's only about nineteen thousand five hundred dollars that is not directly related to some type of personnel employees. The rest of that is professional development that we'll use wisely. So I wanted you to know that we have not increased, we actually cut two positions in the federal money because of going back and looking at, as Dr. Lawrence explained, the easy CVM that we're going to probably move to. It's also going to be trained together and assist them to talk in the same language. We no longer felt like we needed our own progress monitoring team of two employees to do that, so we moved around and tried to resituate those employees and saved two positions in the federal money as well. So I think we've done a great job this year, probably the most pleased with this budget of any, even though it was kind of nerve wracking at the time, but we made it. Do you have any questions as far as the federal preschool?
What's the number of students we have in the special?
We have nine hundred, I knew you asked that one. They're right around nine, actually have eight hundred and ninety three right now. It's a decrease, and that's what you want to see, a decrease because of the RTI, we are seeing the numbers drop. However, in the students that are struggling, are very severe, low incidence, high incidence, excuse me, they are, the numbers aren't growing. That's where we're seeing a great deal of children with autism, emotional disturbances, that area is growing, I was talking to Angie Fuller earlier, who subjects from, of course, and she was saying, if you see some of those kids out there, how many kids are starting to come into the public? She asked, where are they all coming from? But I think there's a sign out there on the interstate saying something Frankie Campbell, we'll serve your kids and do a good job. But we do have our lot of students, as we're seeing around. It's about seventy percent of the population. It's about seventy percent of the population discount. It's about seventeen, but it's about that area. It's about seventy percent of the population discount.
It's about fifteen.
Yes, it's about seventeen, but it's about that area. That's what I was figuring out too. And those are the ones. And what worries me is that we're serving students. I'm proud. They're very expensive. They're poor. They want attention. Those are the ones that...
I mean, this teacher's name really got a lot of attention.
I'm proud to say that we'll ever maintain what we've got and shuffle around even some teachers next year in the federal budget as far as positions so that they can go to a couple of schools and help serve those kids that are really needing service. We have, for example, south, there's a third-related students next year in two classrooms with thirty-eight of the senior students, which means we've got to do some inclusion. We try to spread that information. We've got to lead your right wing in there, they receive jobs. Anytime, I don't know how many of you have been out to see our programs, but we are very proud of what we do. Angie, thank you for the comment, especially you're right, this federal works a great job. Anytime, I don't know how many of you have been out to see our programs, but we are very proud of what we do in front of county and I have an excellent staff that works very hard. I just need to see you approve it. Saying that, I want to talk to you real quick. I'm going to talk to you about Tennessee Rehabilitation Center. I want to talk to you about what Dr. Lawrence was speaking about. We will approve it for our students that are going to apply for occupation. I remember occupation added two years ago. You don't get the regular diploma, the special. The occupation diploma has a requirement that is holding this right man in front of the county. We've been working, TRC, that diploma is not enough. We're really going to try to make the salary work. So I went to a grapeyard recently, I started about overseeing Tennessee, you can get this grant where they will pay seventy percent of the salary. And our pocket teachers were around to go in and oversee the program. I don't know what your assistant would work with that teacher. So saying that, our out-of-pocket costs were around twenty-two thousand dollars. We're getting seventy-five thousand dollars. Starting this person will start going out recruiting companies, recruiting employees, because of their family or companies to start working your kids. And the bottom line is they have to pass what's called a schema. And schema is a rubric that allows them to see if they're able to certain job abilities. And they must pass that rubric before they can receive their occupation diploma. The intent of it is to give our finger clause that whatever company or business will want to hire this person at the end of their second year of training. Training starts their junior and senior year, or if they elect to continue trying to work with the special diploma, and at age twenty, they decide it's not going to happen for them and they want to go the occupation. So what I want to say is they could move that during the two years then, but unless they do that at the end of their twenty-second year. So what I want to say is if you just give your okay, you're going to go ahead and accept this grant and try to see if we can promote the occupation diploma. I guess some of our kids with disabilities have a chance out there of working and getting off welfare if we can. Yes, it's like, hold on. What we're trying to do is make them independent, self-reliant. And it's not the work-based, we still do the work-based learning. Where those kids have a coordinator, that that is to our teaching the high school. They still will do that. They'll still evaluate our TRC, whether or not they might be eligible for TRCs. But once that's done, they'll go out with us. That is your blessing. Can't really beat it for twenty-two thousand dollars. Thank you so much.
I've got a quick question. Based on our ADM, what would be if they're reporting what they do?
What that would be if they're reporting what they do? Some of the students are counting more than...
What that would be if they're reporting what they do? Some of the students are counting more than... What that would be if they're reporting what they do? Some of the students are counting more than... We have to count because you might have a child. You draw, we draw, forty-one, forty-two. You might have a child that's getting... State average is about sixty to seventy. Watch that close a little bit. And they'll watch, they'll make us watch that. They'll get over identified, the population. So they'll make us, watch that close. But again, as I was telling, I don't know what you're going to do. You might say, well, you might go have them somewhere else. It's just what you want to do. You might be diagnosed. You might have a ward that you might say, well, we might want to go have them somewhere else or go back and look at it. You might be diagnosed, but these are diagnosed by medical...
It's stayed fifteen, seventeen years.
But I told her we should pay you this past year. That's why we're looking at another buck. I really have a concern about the number of students with severe disabilities. And more and more children are in a special transportation because of those severe disabilities. But all makes sense. But again, maybe, maybe right here.
I have a quick question. As I mentioned, the IDA personnel detail, and I just want to make sure I understand that I was wanting elementary. If you go down to the school level, there's not someone, that's not just elementary, but then you go to the district level, there's a person who is forty percent of the time.
Right. We're twenty, doesn't need, and all of that research. We look at, they can stay twenty, thirty percent of the time, and to get out of the south, they can work the other seventy percent of the time and help us with that over.
Very okay. So basically, if you go to the school level detail.
Thirty percent.
Very okay. So that it would, so basically, if you go to the school level detail, operational staff, twenty-three and south, five points.
And that's where, again, we say, because we were paying for full-time teachers, and we realized that was not full years before our nine months ago. That's another example where, yes, we did, we could do it next week. Just, just you need to come down here and say, and when Jimmy gets through, she's going to have a big paper kept and signed every year for our federal budget.
Next week.
You could do it next week, just, just. And when Jimmy gets through, she's going to have a big paper kept and signed every year for our federal budget.
I just gave you all a really brief overview of our federal funds, my ESA, Ron's, I D E A. And Linda's pulling up his plan now. We don't have access to give it, I know you didn't afford chairs, or you didn't like it. You can see it. I can give you that. We submitted it on Friday, Ron, for FY seventeen, and it takes the state a couple of weeks. It'll probably be in the debate when we get back before the night. It's under funding. And go, that's it. And then go to 2017. And when you click on that, you can go all the way through each of our programs and see what we have planned underneath. I just gave you all just a real quick overview and I'm going to walk you through it and stop if you have questions. Title one is for our high poverty schools. We did it again, the entry is about forty thousand. We are doing a change there this year. I pull poverty numbers each year and I cover just the one I pull from. And I started looking at Rock Creek's number, the poverty numbers for higher income schools here, the most poverty. When I did my title one application, I had to serve my grade-level schools by far, which means a high poverty school is the most poverty, and it works on that line. Therefore, I had to pick up Rock Creek. And all of that I had to pick up, I had to move to the county. So the order now, we've got Parkmore, the highest poverty, Denver, and Rock Creek in the county. Because of that, I had to drop off Swan. Swan is poverty around fifty, fifty percent. Rock Creek is up there, around sixty. And Linda, if you go in and look at, and Linda, you will scroll all the way over. Sorry about that. Keep going. And Linda, you will scroll all the way over and show the percentages. And then you can see, um, for Memorial's seventy-five percent, and you have Denver, Rock Creek, and then it goes all the way down.
And so in the past, I've been able to serve, because they don't put into a spiral. We put our elementary schools together, together, then our six, four, eight, nine, twelve, eleven, ten. And a few years ago, that would be impacted because now that one application sold it, but fifth grader filled out the application, and they have siblings in middle or high school, you know, that's, it does work. So, any other questions? Um, title one's very much like, applications, the majority of the schools spend their money on personnel. They make sure that they're using the school design. So that's our title one. Title two A is our teacher development. This is for the RPD, I will thank for our coaches, our group specialists, and pretty much all of that, which will right now will be going in with their salary. So that's two A. Title three, that is our ELL. If you look on EPLAN, it's going to show that we receive only six thousand dollars. We, because we receive less than six thousand dollars, we have to belong to a proportion of the year with a physical agent for the award. So Cindy. To pay back this system, as they spend money, they will send for their bills and their return checks and all that type of thing, and she'll write them checks. So our allocation for title three was fifty-six hundred dollars, and then we're in proportion with Coffee County, but the city of Lincoln County, Lincoln County, so all of their funds are put into our title three allocation. So if you look at that, you're just like, wow, that's a lot of money. So, any questions about title three? Cindy's going to have a lot of extra money this year. The last one is our Christmas gift. It's our gift and rules and lower, and low income. And this year, it's seven-six thousand. Last year, all of that went for technology. This is a Christmas gift and it's sort of a catch-all and we can spend it pretty much all for one, too. So this year, we're using for technology and we're giving up for RPI, and I will tell you that as a Christmas gift, when we were at our EPLAN meeting about a month ago, I was sitting there in Coffee County, and she said, "I don't have any money in town." And I was like, "Well, I did." And how's Coffee County like, "What's that?" And I guess we're giving it for about five years, so we just take this. But in the best way we can do. So, any questions about the ESA portion? If you all put this on the consent agenda, and then Kevin will have you sign off then quickly. Thank you.
All right. I don't think I remember the...
These are the resolutions that need to go forward. They're already going forward, ten on the condition. So just to make you aware of some finitures that are... If you have questions on the other things, I'd be happy to answer them. This does include, the first resolution does include the three hundred and seventy thousand dollars additional settlement tax that was received.
Okay. I have four questions. I don't...
For recent, if you want to know if having certainly come out with well, the reason we're filling out that form, and if you actually did not have any options on...
The reason we did not have any certainly come out as well, our instructor, which is made of one person, did go through the standards in the books and felt like the standards did align, and that's our recommendation for the legislature. But we do have to submit that information to the state, and then they will in turn approve or not approve. If they don't approve, I'm not sure what we'll do because we do have to have a textbook.
All right, back to the ladies. I was prepared to let them all talk about their very questions on all of them. They'll look at all of them. There's two more I got y'all.
That's what I said. Second one is the cafeteria fund budget, some transfer, and then your realignment there, and then the federal project fund. This is the hundred thousand that we move in there every year to start the year off with, so that there isn't any allocated for federal programs that we need a year. So that's, those resolutions will go forward to that kind of issue.
Okay. A few questions on the... All right. Review of section six policy. Let's take about a five-minute break before we get back to it. Let's tell you what, we're in a long meeting, we've been here an hour and a half. Let's take about a five-minute break.
Another one, administrators, when you left the board, that they were very appreciative of the first one, have to act of sympathy behind us, and the lady to her saying they like that. They were just like, oh, they appreciate it.
I see you saying that in this third one, tragic. Tragic event, we're talking about something that would have been... All right, we'll get going here on the section six policy point. We also...
In reviewing the drug policies that we currently have in place, we're actually for, I passed those on to Mr. Pagel and asked him to review them as well, because I felt like there were a few things that we probably needed to look at. After reviewing the Tennessee Code annotated forty-nine dash six dash forty-two thirteen, it's pretty specific as to the intent of what our drug testing policy should be and our drug-free schools policy should be. In speaking with him, he was actually part of the team that drafted this legislation as it went through approval with the legislators, and he said that, you know, there's certain things of this. He kind of shared with me some of the intent of the legislation at that point, which then again influenced what we have in our board policies. The first policy, six point three zero seven, is standard in looking in TSBAs recommended language. It was, there's no reviews or changes that need to be made to that six point three zero seven. The second one we have is six point three zero seven one. The student, or is the alcohol in illegal controlled substances, one, there is some recommended changes there, and that is in accordance with that Tennessee code that I cited. He felt like that that needed to be the, the things that can indicate a reasonableness for doing a drug test of an individual student has to meet one of those criteria that are listed there, one through five, and that's actually...
Um, uh, review of section six policy. Let's say what, if we're in a long meeting, we've been here an hour and a half, let's take about a five minute break before we, we'll be back there. Let's say what, if we're in a long meeting, we've been here an hour and a half, let's take about a five minute break.
Another one, administrators, when you left the board, that they were very appreciative of the first one has to, in the hunt on active, especially in hand is in relation to her saying they got a lot of people called trash. They were just like, oh, no, appreciate it.
I thought you were saying that in that third one, that tragic. Tragic event, the word, talk to person with names, whatever. All right, we'll get going here on the, uh, section six policy. Uh, we also
In reviewing the, um, drug policies that we currently have in place, we're actually for, um, I passed those on to Mr. Cagle and asked him to review them as well because I felt that like there were a few things that we probably needed to look at. After reviewing the Tennessee Code annotated forty-nine dash six dash forty-two thirteen, it's pretty specific as to the intent of what our drug testing policy should be and our drug free schools policy should be. Uh, in speaking with him, he was actually part of the team that drafted this legislation as it went through, uh, approval with the legislators. And he said that, you know, there's certain things of this, he kind of shared with me some of the intent of the legislation at that point, which then again influenced what we have in our board policies. The first policy, six point three zero seven, uh, is standard in looking in T S B A's recommended language. It was, there's no reviews or changes that need to be made to that six point three zero seven. The second one we have is six point three zero seven one. The student, or is the alcohol in illegal controlled substances, uh, one, there is some recommended changes there and that is in accordance with that Tennessee Code that I cited. Um, he felt like that that needed to be the, the, the things that can indicate a reasonableness for doing a drug test of an individual student, uh, has to meet one of those criteria that are listed there, one through five. And that's actually from code. And I think I sent you all a copy of the Tennessee Code and it's also posted on board docs. So we tried to clean up some of the language so that the principals are very aware of what actually was, is within their responsibilities if there is a situation that arises where they need to do a drug test. Um, we left in the description of the alcohol and the illegal or controlled substances. You'll notice on the second page of that, and I apologize, I don't have all the format, formatting cleaned up to tell you a lot of them, but we also included some testing procedures. Uh, we have a separate policy, uh, which is six point three zero seven three, that's for the alternative school. Mr. Cagle's recommendation was to roll those testing requirements because a student is a student regardless of where they're assigned in Franklin County. So his recommendation was to do away with that policy and roll into this policy, the testing procedures of how we would administer a test regardless of where that student is assigned as their own school. So those are listed on the second page. Um, and those again, if you look at the Tennessee Code, it's almost verbatim from there as the directions of how to do that and what the responsibilities are for the school administration. Um, I think it's very important to note that no testing, uh, can be done without prior notice to the parents. So the parents are notified first before any testing occurs if there is a suspicion of something, uh, that needs to be tested at that point.
Is that why we changed the name of that policy?
It is, it is. Mm-hmm. It's changed now to student alcohol and drug testing. So that would be the title now.
I'm okay. I understand exactly what the point there is. I would encourage us all to have some kind of communication with the juvenile court system. And I guess we're talking about alternatives because as much as I am, we have the judges, Y S O, and coming to test them pretty much at will.
Right, if they're in the court system already, if they're identified, correct.
I think that maybe if there's a concern or say alternatives to personnel, so like that is a motivation or a deterrent for those kids not to do or safely, whatever, I don't care what they get away from, anything that they, but maybe it's a few catches, then maybe a period of passing, if they maybe use it more quickly, let's see.
Okay.
They don't have to do, you know, you're talking about one, two, or three at a time. It does not have to be the whole. It's very fair to the unknown, I guess. If those kids don't want to come, I think that's pretty effective.
So my recommendation would be to, um, delete the six point three zero seven three, which is the alternative school policy that's separate and roll all of that information into this policy, which is six point three zero seven one. Okay. And then the next one, uh, the actual third separate policy that we have on drug testing is for student athletes. Um, Mr. Cagle's recommendation, again, having been present when the legislator passed this, um, Tennessee Code, he said the intent from those legislators was always that it would be a urine test. So he felt like that the hair sample was outside of the bounds of, um, the state law. So his recommendation on page two of that policy is to take out the line eight there where it's highlighted in red. We are going to set up a meeting, uh, after the school year ends with our drug testing company, just so we have a better understanding. I know there's a lot of concern that has been expressed on random, how we're selecting individuals to be tested. Uh, and so I want to have a better understanding for that, so I would definitely get some more information back to you at that point.
Let me ask a question there. The difference, if we can't hair test, the difference between specimen test and hair test cost-wise?
It decreases.
Yeah. Can we not just test everyone and not announce what will that offset that cost?
You could, but I'm not sure that, well, I'll have to ask because I'm thinking conflicting thoughts there and maybe Mr. Tucker can have an idea on this from the legal side, but that doesn't mean that it's random if you do that, but student athletes, athletes do not.
Random, but things that we do is random.
But the student athletes don't necessarily fall into the category of, of it having to be random, is my understanding.
Very extragreat, or you can drug test everybody.
Everybody, so, do you, do you?
I have an expertise.
Okay.
I can research, I can research it.
Oh, wait, uh, let me ask Mr. Cagle, since he's already into this and has that done.
I'm sure he's a spanner, that is.
Okay.
Just extragreat, when you're not required, no word, if you volunteer to do it, you can drug test everybody.
Right. Okay, let me double check on that.
My question in saying that was that would alleviate our random transplant problem that we're having.
That's true. All athletes would be tested at the end.
Well, athletes are gonna be tested. We're not gonna tell you when they're gonna be tested.
Okay.
And we will just come in one day and say, okay, but that's the thing.
You think we, that'd be definitely the numbers problem. We're doing a one of three or fifty percent?
I really don't know what that is, but I know the cost is low, three or four times more.
Oh, yeah, I know it was more expensive when we were doing.
And so it would only be the athletes that probably would be in season, so it's pop, it's possible to give a three sport athlete and they get tested three times a year, but that's just what it is, yeah.
Originally, the way it was, is you got, everybody got this initial, initially, and then do it each time during the year.
And if we were to go to the specimen athlete, we could also possibly look at our local hospital and see if we came more, if the counselor is still there, but I don't know what, but if there's a slave there, but I guess, I was thinking, there's a question for you.
Should be, I'll check. So we decrease the number of them.
Uh, quick question with respect to, what was it, the proposed, uh, six point three zero seven? Did the testing procedures, most of, did all of that, or just most of that come from the Tennessee Code? The, the testing procedures bottom?
I think most of that is in code. I have to go back to what I reviewed it. Uh, and it was also in the T S B A recommended language. So it was a little bit of a combination of both.
The, the question, the, the only question I have, and I, I, and this, and I don't want the, the exception to, to kind of dictate policy, but my only concern about this is it doesn't leave open the possibility that the, the student gets caught, someone has observed behavior by a student that raises, creates a reasonable suspicion that, that the person is, um, is, is a legal drug or substance. Um, and, and then it's brought, the student's brought into the principal's office and is informed of the information that is in support of that suspicion. Um, and it doesn't give the student an opportunity to say, actually, I'm on prescription medication. Um, and to say, to be able to present that evidence, um, as to why maybe they shouldn't be drug tested, because if they refuse the drug, if they actually have that evidence and they refuse the drug test, they're suspended. So it, so it doesn't, there isn't a possi, there doesn't seem like a possibility in the procedures for the student to say, this is why would that be that way? And I, again, I think, I don't want the exception to, um, or at least be provided the opportunity to.
How do you know that you don't test them, that whatever medication that they're having prescribed is what it's causing, they're paid for that particular thing?
You, you don't, you don't, but the, you, I would just, I think it would be.
Part of that may come through, but, you know, obviously you have to contact the parent first.
Parents, okay.
So the parent possibly would be able to provide that information and produce a prescription and that sort of thing.
Even, even if they, even if they produce a prescription, if you are in an intoxicated or incapable state, that, that doesn't fly. I mean, there are a lot of prescription medications that if you take and drive a car, you're under the influence. So if you're in that, that of an awful state of mind, you're, you're taking that out of context, you're taking an improper substance going on, because, you know, we're talking properly about someone's free, and that free wiped out.
And I hope you understand, I'm not trying to create a loophole for someone who's obeyed testing, but it's just trying to get out of it. I just wanted to see if there was a, and this may be a question for Mr. Cagle, is at what point in time, if there did a, like a legitimate medical explanation for the behavior, did that get taken into consideration?
Well, they can be acquired.
And I know with our employees, the employee is notified if it's a positive and they're allowed to produce any prescriptions that might have a positive result. So I would assume the urine will be the same way. If it was a student test as well, they would be notified, the parent would be notified and they would have an opportunity then to produce those. But they would have to, the prescription would have to match what is being positive in the year.
Sure, of course, of course.
Sure.
We did this before, when the urine testing, when the test, it came back, it was not a normal result. The results went to the medical review officer, the medical review officer contacted the parents and said, they, as you're talking, have a prescription for this. And they were, the medical review officer took care of that, rather than the school system on the front end.
Okay, but that, if that, if that's, I, I know that's how we do it, the city Murphy Bureau with employees, and if that, if that's same safe cards in place, I'm not.
That's, that's what we did years ago, before we did that.
That, that addresses my concern. Do we tell the, like, in that instance, that you were talking about, with, like, teaching, for instance, if we have a hot test, do, do they get notified as to what was, what prescription they should be able to produce?
No, they're asked to bring in the prescriptions, not the specific.
But we, they generically are told they have a.
And they have a timeframe as to when they have to produce those. I think it's within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, something like that.
So they don't know what prescription to go get.
No, they don't.
I'll just check it.
I hope it can be retroactive in that situation, so. Um, the other policy that will need amendment is the alternative school programs policy, which is six point three one nine. With this change and what we're saying with the testing, uh, it changed some language in that, it's in that paragraph on lines twenty-three through twenty-seven, and that's marked in red as well. And that just reflects what you're doing in policy as well, if you'll read those changes.
Okay, the other was just, the, the other one here, like, that's, that's just to come.
Correct, correct. That's just to, to make it in compliance with the, um, test.
Okay, to not muddy the waters up on that one.
Okay.
What was purpose right here and say, um, the six point three zero seven three, we're talking about discontinuing that policy, right?
Correct. It will be, the testing procedure will be included in six point three zero seven one.
Okay. Um, any, any other discussions or comments on any of these that we would not want to put on consent agenda? And just remember, the consent agenda next week will say on this six point three zero seven three, voting for the consent agenda will say, well, we're moving that policy. So if not, we'll put all those.
Okay.
Yeah, that will go, that will go to the dress code.
I sent, sent you, and I don't know if you read through all of it, it was quite lengthy, but, uh, I sent you a spreadsheet of the responses from the teachers. We did a survey on both the elementary level and the middle and high school level. A fairly good response, I was pleased with that. We had a hundred and fourteen teachers that responded at the elementary level and a hundred and twenty-four at the secondary. And there were lots of comments, uh, made on those. And based on, based on their, their comments, there weren't a lot of changes that needed to be made to the existing policy. One of the things that I did make a change to, and it's kind of hard to tell, it's still in red, but it is the, um, the length of the shorts, the rope hair shorts, majority were, as well as shorts and capris. But, um, instead of trying to measure what's three inches above the knee, the recommendation by several teachers in the survey was just to say that it must cover to the top of the knee when standing. And then that way, you're not worried about needing to take measure out to do three inches. And I thought that was a really good suggestion from them. Because you can pretty well, when they're standing up, visibly look at them and tell if they're being within that dress code.
The, the proposal here in line fifteen is going to.
From two to six, yes, I'm sorry, that.
And that was dropping my attention, that in line twenty-four, it still says two inches.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that's the second one.
Um, here's the one thing that I think that we, that it's important that we look at, is we don't want to create an item that's hard to measure. You know, the, uh, quick glance says that's dress code or not, we shouldn't have to have that measure, you know? And, and I'll even throw out right now, if the six inch logo is gonna do that, then I think that's a problem. And if the two inch logo does that, I think that's a problem. It ought to be one of those that, okay, everybody in here is in dress code? That, that, in my opinion, that's the purpose of the dress code, it's not that, when we were getting along, go with Mr. Tucker, is, uh, he was in dress code with that close look, he looked at me because, oh, that's some lines in his shirt. Uh, I mean, that's not ours, yeah. And we don't want to create a burden to monitor, but, uh, I, I will say, uh, give an inch, we'll take a mile on it too.
And you're still in sweet.
Six inch shorts.
That's what I was gonna say, that's true.
I mean, that's huge.
Length or width?
Squier, a square.
Square.
And you also, I sent, um, I apologize that I didn't get it out to you today until this afternoon, but I sent you the definition of spirit wear by all of the principals at the school level. And there was kind of consensus in that, that spirit wear is anything that has the school logo or is something that a school sponsored, uh, that that would be appropriate for wear at the school level.
I don't, of course, I defer to the majority of the board, but I don't like that, sure. It's not what it is, because years past, I know what they meant. And that's one of those, like, kids talking about, that's one of those animals. You spend ten, fifteen minutes on them, and that.
My thing is, we're testing later and then that's what we, uh, we're going.
That's gonna be one of those wearing you down.
Okay, I'll, I'll throw this in. Um, my tenure on this board is short-lived, but I will throw out, uh, I, I'll support what the majority wants, but I would, I would advise that, uh, elementary and middle and high school are all different locations, too. And we're trying to prepare kids in high school to become responsible adults. We're trying to educate them, give them a job, you know, whether it's career or technical. And I think dress is where that starts. That's the first thing you do when you go to a job interview, is, you know, go in your shorts and you go, I mean, six, it's one of those. I mean, and, and I'm not, I'm just saying, I think those are things that we should take into consideration when we're, what's our intent here, what's our purpose? Uh, we're trying to get them to live with their, uh, life and their careers. And again, I think it's different when you're in elementary school, I think it's different when you're in middle school, when you're in high school, I think there's, we start to hopefully set those, uh, set those parameters a little bit. But I will, I will yield to the majority of the board as far as what you, what you want to take on. I know where we've, we've been for the last eight years and we definitely don't need to be there.
I want to say, if it was elementary, it could be an evolutionary process. I just know in high school, it is a big issue.
I'm sure it can, but on the other side of the coin, a young man presented the argument, mentioned the comfort issue, and I said a lot of that home, and they're clear out, or if you're, you know, if you're, that comes down to the top of the day, you know, they're done with our, I'm a daddy, I'm wearing corduroy things. So, you know, and that's just one, I'm upset.
I will say this, if we make a dress code that says, type of any shorts, there's a good chance to all those are gonna have to be homemade, because I'm sure you can't.
It will be for girls. It's, it's. what you, what you want to take on. I know where we've been for the last eight years and we definitely don't need to be there.
I wanted to say that elementary school could be an evolution, I just know in high school it may still be.
I'm sure it can, but on the other side of the coin, a young man presented the argument, mentioned the comfort issue and I said a lot of Oklahoma and they're clear out, more shorts and they're, that's kind of, that comes down to the top of the day. They're done with our, I'm a daddy, I'm wearing corduroy things. So that's bigger kids, you know? And that's just one, I look at.
I will say this, if we make a dress code that says type of these shorts, there's a good chance to all those going to have to be homemade, cause I'm sure you can't.
It will be for girls.
Well, um, where did the, to get back to logos, I know I did some research at other school districts and some say no logos, but, you know, and others, we had two and now we're going to six. I, I, I think no logo is a little restrictive because I think the difference between a, a white polo shirt that has no logo and one that has a little alligator. I'm, you know, I don't think that's an issue, I'm just wondering where, what was the decision to go from two to six? Not that I have any objection to it.
It was primarily, primarily a recommendation from the principals, because they felt like the two inch was pretty restricted and they thought that it, you know, if we're going to keep the logo rule, they were comfortable with increasing the size of that.
Is that because of like the MC?
It is, and then, you know, you think about like the Ralph Lauren, sometimes they'll have the bigger horse logo on them and, and it's going to break, that would break the dress code because it would be over.
Right.
Um, they can still be a polo shirt, a nice polo shirt, but the positive logo, they're not able to wear. So I think that's where the principals were coming from with the, with doing the larger, done. And I don't know if you want to include in the policy additional language about what specifically is spirit wear? Or if you're comfortable with what the principals.
There was one of the principals wrote a recommendation about that.
I, I agree. What do you think? Kind of, I would like to see a definition, I, I.
Put into the policy.
Yeah, and I don't have strong feelings on what that is, but I think it would be helpful to define it within the policy.
This, I found, we can see the spirit wear, the tee shirts, white shirts, with school logo, also jerseys, women's, with school athletic things on game, that is it's pretty inclusive in my mind, because in my mind, it's pretty popular.
What about a logo that's six inches tall? Who would like?
We didn't.
Have you got like, in four or six?
I can tell you what's popular right now, because my daughter has one, there's a logo on the back of the shirt and it goes all the way around the thing, it's a long sleeve and I don't know what brand it is, but that definitely is the, the stuff now.
Six inches wide, she'd be okay or tall.
Yeah, well, it's probably only four inches, but it must be.
No larger than six inches, you know, square. I mean, that would be six inches square, it would be, it would be thirty-six inches square.
No more than six inches.
Because that would be six by, six by six. Would be thirty-six inches square.
Thirty-six square inch.
Thirty-six square inch logo.
And we want to get back to the.
Yeah. But if you want, if, not larger than six inches long, wide or tall.
So not, not all school systems, um, defined a logo size or anything like that.
I have other systems handling this.
Our dress code is looking at, uh, I looked at Marshall and Lincoln and, um, I didn't look at Tallahassee, but I looked at Coffey County, because they're kind of similar to our size. They're not as specific as what we're, we're getting, there's barely a page, so it was pretty, yeah, just it, just kind of a, very simple.
I'm sure if you put a number out there, you gotta have something within the course, you have to define and clear.
And then the other, the other extreme is Rutherford County has, does not allow logos period. So, I, and, and, and that's, to me, that seems a little extreme, but.
That's, that's the thing that's going outside, it's a lot of gear.
Yeah.
Those logos need to be in good taste too, right?
I mean, it's.
It does define that on the second page, I think is where it is.
The issue, the issue though, when you get into the good taste thing, it's, 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 regulating, regulating it by size is easier to do and safer to do, we believe that it is by.
It's a one man's work.
Yes, by what is actually said, I mean, there are probably things that all of us could agree is that's not appropriate for school. But there would be some that would fall into a grade area and that's where the, the size is kind of an advantage. That's it, there couldn't be something that's six inches tall that would, that would follow of the, you know, that was, would be considered vulgar or obscene.
I remember seeing in one of the documents that you sent us, I don't think it was from the principals, maybe it was from the teachers. But something, I, I remember reading something about.
That was more concerned at the elementary level.
Oh, okay.
Uh, in the, this, the upper grades, like fourth and fifth grade.
Okay.
The shortness of the shorts and this beginning stress, um, because that's not necessarily addressed in the elementary policy that, and that's.
The shortness of the shorts is, um, if they're caked. His, his girls would have a problem, that is not their fault, it's just what they made. But I may, maybe you can buy caked off short or something, but they're, 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 that's on the can, but I'm guilty of that.
Here's one thing, it is, I mean, we could go with a six inch, say logos no larger than six inches long or six inches tall. And if, if we're, if we're back next April and the teachers are saying it's actually made our lives worse, we can. Like we can also. But if, if teachers are saying rather have something that's six inches at two, they're, if they're the people that are trying, that need, are trying to enforce the current policy that they're saying it's too hard to do it at two. I think we should defer to their judgment on the size of the logo from, from enforcement standpoint and if it, if it works better, that's great. If it doesn't work better, it's, it's not the end of the world, we can always come back to it next year.
The size of the logo is written in by the principals.
Oh, by the principals, I'm sorry.
Yes, by the principals, but they're also, they're also, you know, responsible for enforcing.
Yeah, let me ask this, um, in, in line twenty-seven, shorts, skirts and capris must cover the top of the knee. But, but back in line twelve, we talk about pants and skirts, so how long can a skirt be?
The skirt is on line three, or number, it was actually four, I got a misnumbered in there, on page, or on, uh, line thirty-two. I got my number repeated.
So really, we could do it right with three if we enforced the.
You had shirts to watch, you had tons of skirts to watch.
Yeah, we could, we could actually put, um, if, if we adopted this policy, there would be no need to have a separate line, kind of tall.
So include that with line two, is that what you're saying?
What about you split two?
Well, that cheaply, that's well.
Wait till we get to sheaves, okay, really. I miss me. I saw a girl follow up, I guess she's going to put a lot.
What do you do worthwhile with all of it, and I'm not, I'm really not suggesting you do this, uh, people should think it's worthwhile.
What's that?
Um, is it real, is it worthwhile going back to the teachers and saying, hey, go really, I'm just making sure this is what you want?
Did you read all the comments?
There were, there were several pages of responses, I, I appreciate the teachers taking it seriously and providing the input that they provided. I don't know, at this point in the year, if I go back with another survey, I don't know that I was getting. Yes, so they're thinking in the year, getting.
Like that, that's what I'm trying to say.
So we need to adopt this policy for schools.
So we can let, uh, the parents know, so they know what types of school clothes to buy.
Looking at, um, just the summary sheet that you sent us, almost seventy-five percent of the elementary teachers said they didn't think the dress code policy.
Right.
They didn't change it.
Well, that's. Elementary is, yeah.
So this is, we're surely talking about middle and high school.
Yes, ma'am, I think that's.
Even more so to me.
Cause it was the opposite, um, eighty-eight percent said that yes, we should change the dress code for middle and high school. So it's almost a reciprocal of those numbers.
I, I think the bottom of this policy is, is important though, when it says, um, the board expects the director of schools to require all principals and all certified personnel to enforce the old dress code systematically. And I, I honestly think that's one of the issues we have today, is some don't care and some do.
And that came through in the survey comments from the teachers as well, so that's on me to make sure that the administration is following those dress codes, but I think some of the things that you're incorporating in here will make it much easier on them and there won't be as much time spent on concerns over dress code. So I think it'll be easier to enforce the action, the changes that you're originating, or you're considering.
All right, is there any, any, uh, anything else that anybody wants to discuss as far as changes to the board?
I'll make that correction, uh, with the number three there, the bottom, on line thirty-two.
And then if it'll go over to six inches, it needs to be.
On the line.
Okay, you can come back. I'll leave that one out.
I, I'd like to leave it off just in case anyone has, I, I mean, I don't see a long discussion, but it's just in case someone has an additional thought before we pass it or vote, vote on it.
And I'd like for you all to look at the changes on it too, just to be sure everything's as you want.
That one will be, that one will stay under the. Okay, um, I'm six, class fees.
Consent agenda.
Ms. Foster, do you have any comments on the, um, class fees?
No, I really don't, I mean, that's what the principals have requested.
I, I think all of them, that I could tell when I went through them, with the exception of being the Franklin County High School was the same as it was the third part here. Okay, I'm seven, and, uh.
Ms. Foster.
I've never been here, now I've lost my crown, I've been placed several times. The Sibley Bank trustees have met numerous times this year, they, we've had, the trustees have addressed numerous questions, they've certainly, they've actually allotted, I think, somewhere around four hundred fifty days specifically bank because of the chronic illnesses of our staff. In the process of doing that, the balance of days available has dropped down slightly under the number of members that the bank has. So one of the things that the trustees have to do is they have to, when, when the number of days drops under the number of members, then they have to tell the members that they, they have to be reassessed to that. So when the trustees met in the first, um, April, the, the trustees did that, they, they, they told the, the other members that they would reassess one additional day in September of next year, so I have done that. Uh, that will make the bank much more solvent, that will add some of the four hundred days back to the bank again and, and we can start with a year and hopefully a much more healthy year than we've had this year. Also, when the trustees did that, they actually looked at the rules of the, the, the bank. And they made the recommendation that you can see here, let's see if I can pull it up so everybody can see it. That they, they, they actually looked through all the rules and they, they saw no problem with any of them, with the exception of number four. Due to the fact that we will be reassessing days, they, they wanted to be sure that the members understood that if they withdraw from the bank, from the bank, they're only withdrawing their benefits from the bank, they're not going to get their days back. But some people choose to do that, they choose to withdraw from the bank, which is their livelihood, I, I received two of those by the way. And they, they want to withdraw membership, that's a genuine story, I honor that, that's fine. But the trustees wanted this change to be made in the rules and of course, you'd have to approve of any change. The, the trustees said if a member withdraws to the bank and later re-enrolls, by again contributing two days to the bank, the re-enrolled member would only be eligible to request days from the bank, six days after re- enrolled. Six months, I'm sorry, six months, excuse me, I need, I need to learn to read here. Uh, they can't just re-enroll and then next week apply for a grant of days, so I think there should be some limitation for the people who have actually dropped out. So that's what I'm presenting to you, that. And that, no other chance to get off.
Okay, Adam Hake, his contract is important, Dr. Morris. I had this put on here, um, when, when we, uh, agreed on her about going, I was negotiating her contract. Uh, one of the, one of the things that she brought up during negotiations was, uh, the wording in line seventeen, section D. And, and at that time, I told her that, uh, that the board would not consider revising that language on the front end of her hire. But I also told her that within the first year, that we would, uh, go back and address that and we're kind of at that point. I, I don't know technically where we are as far as the window of opportunity, I know we go into a. But what's, what's, what's the correct terminology? So, so we don't, we've got a limited time to do, to make an adjustment, uh, to that contract and basically, uh, and I'm, I'm going on my memory, so if I don't say it right, you, you step in and tell me, that the, 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 the problem with the wording was, and this is actually for a termination without clause, it's about halfway down, it's, uh, says the board shall pay into the director all salaries and benefits to the director from the date of termination until the expiration of this contract or one calendar year, whichever is shorter. Uh, and, and the recommendation is to take out the one calendar year, leaving it as the expiration of the contract. Um, one of the things that, uh, I, I will propose is, um, I, I was comfortable with that language being in there on the front end, even though Dr. Morris wasn't, yes, that's a little insurance policy for the board. Uh, she's been here a year, she's, uh, bought property here, they have a house, she's committed and this is all under the scope of without clause. So if you don't have cause to get rid of a director's tools, there probably no reason to exercise that option anyway, is my, my personal opinion. Uh, and if you have cause to get rid of a director, you don't need this clause anyway, because you have procedures for, um, giving rid of someone with clause. Did I explain that section right? Okay, so as far as I know, nothing else was, uh, unacceptable in the contract. Uh, but I did tell Dr. Morris I would bring that back to the board during the first year and that's what I'm doing at this point.
I remember having that discussion and I, I think, I appreciate you bringing it back up and I would support the removal of that, uh, the, the last phrase there, that for one calendar year, whichever is short, just adding, just sensitive until the expiration of this contract period.
period.
I remember why that was put in there, and I understood at the time, but it's critical when they have, you absolutely have to, I believe, that director of schools and assistants be a member of that community and a little there, and I don't think there's any question that Dr. Lawrence has made that commitment to us, and I think that it's unfair that we turn and make that commitment to her. I don't necessarily think that happened in the past, but I don't think we have that issue now, and I would have, I would just remove that and lead to the continuation of the contract.
So, what's the bottom?
We're basically saying that you can't get rid of the director of schools without cause, without fulfillment of the contract, not just for one year. It's whatever left is on the contract.
Four-year contract, that's the first year you get up.
Three years, or it could be two years, or one year.
Whatever that is.
Whatever that is. Who says this cause?
Cause.
Cause is a, cause is a...
She goes off on a theme about...
Also, in the contract, let's talk about pay, there's a clause, I looked it up this morning, and I lost it, that talks about pay, the contract did, it says that raises for the director of schools shall be awarded by the boards of education. When I calculated raises on two percent, I paid for two percent, but I, that was me. I think you need to tell me what to give or not give her. That's in the contract somewhere.
Right. I would say if she's our employee, and our employees get two percent.
Well, but the contract does say that has to be done in a public board, so I want to be sure that we take care of that.
I think by, I think by adopting the budget, that line I know, and that it is two percent, we are making that decision.
Very good, very good, that's fine.
I'm sure we would love to give you more. That might come some grief if you're staying.
Any, any other discussion online, or is there any reservations about that? If not, we'll, we'll, that doesn't concern...
It was set to gender, it was, it was, it was five, like, we passed.
And I'm assuming you want to recite it.
I would be right.
Okay, if no reservations, we will put down at the second. Okay, that wraps up all the new business items. Tomorrow is the, just a reminder, we've been in here for a long time, so that was one time, you said it, four o'clock mark at the high school.
At the high school.
Is the negotiation.
We have four hundred, we'll have four hundred people sign up to be there, so you might want to come more early, get car. Or decide, somebody, be fine.
Any other, any other movements?